The first item on the agenda is Leavenworth School District, USD 453 Quarterly Report. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Roth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commission. Once again, it's an honor to be before you to talk a little bit about what's going on with the school district. Probably the most exciting news and some of the stuff that has probably been the most public is the board has agreed to terms with the next superintendent, Dr. Kellen Adams. He's currently the superintendent at Chanute. Mayor Wilson was asking me, one of the things, what I thought personally, I thought Dr. Adams is one of the more respected young superintendents in the state. He is one of the more intellectual individuals that you will have the ability to talk to and work with. And so, one of the things that excites me the most about that is that it's really time for some new energy and some new eyes and some new push for all the great things that have happened over the last nine years. Couple of things that I think is important for you as a commission and the community to continue to do and to support as Dr. Adams takes in, which is some time, there's still some transition. You may even get to see me one more quarterly or maybe two more quarterly, who knows? But the Early Childhood Center has really, really come into its own. I think it's a great foundation for this community. I think it's a great foundation for our school district. We're seeing growth. One of the things that was one of the more challenging was we changed that schedule up. We changed that because really trying to avoid some summer loss and first grade readiness opportunities in this last class has, going into first grade, has really shown some strides. This kindergarten class right now has shown remarkable growth in a lot of areas that we haven't seen before. And so, I'm excited to follow this. I'm excited to see where this goes and super proud of that support from the community to be able to pass that bond to create opportunities such as this. The other thing that I think is important for you as a commission to understand is how important the Pioneer Career Center is to our community, not only to our community but also to our students. Nineteen twenty, the nineteen twenty, the nineteen nineteen twenty school year, the twenty twenty-one school year, and the twenty-one twenty-two school year, we had a hundred and forty-three students that got certificates in the different areas that that program offers. And so, if you think about, and one of the things I told the board last night, if you really think about that, those are individuals that are leaving at a young age, going to hopefully staying in our community, but they're job-ready at that point in time. So, that's a hundred and forty-three students that had not had the opportunity before that probably just changed their life earnings and giving them an opportunity to go out and earn great wages but also provide a service for this city, which would be extremely important for you as a commission as you develop and move things through your strategic plans and do those types of things. This last year, we had seventy, or this last, the first semester, we had seventy-six students enrolled in that. And so, that is not into the hundred and forty-three, but a high percentage of those, my guess would be completers as well. So, there's a lot of positive things happening and I think we forget about those. I think we don't talk enough about the positive things that are happening in our district. I don't think we talk about enough positive things that are happening in our community. And so, with that, I think that as we move forward and as you move forward with the new leadership in the district, I look forward to all of you to continue to build that bond and build that partnership and both sides really do what's best for the community because I think that that's the most important. Some other things that you might be aware of, tomorrow is the Foundation Breakfast. Those of you that are part of the Educational Foundation or supported the Educational Foundation, what a great partnership that that's been over the past and will continue, I'm sure. But they, one of the things, the breakfast is a thank you to all the donors, but the important part of that is, is all of the grants that were given to students or given to teachers for students. And then, the number of those grants turned into programs, which are things that are funded year after year after year with the donations that the people have given. So, it's a great, it's a great process that fortunately I inherited. It's built, they've done a great job with continuing the mission of that of supporting teachers, which supports kids. So, excited for the Foundation Breakfast. All of our winter sports wrapped up, spring sports have begun, spring break is next week. Talking with teacher leadership today. Teachers are ready for spring break. They need that week to kind of re-energize. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like Mother Nature is going to give them a lot of warm weather, but nonetheless, I'm excited for them to have some time off and to re-energize themselves and give them an opportunity to come back for this last quarter and really knock it out of park for our kids. Before you know it, graduation's around the corner. We'll be working with various options on that. Our intent right now is to have it outside, but I will tell you, in the nine years that I've been here, I think only two or three have been outside. Mother Nature has taken the rest inside and COVID actually took one inside as well. So, really, we're plugging away. The staff is very, very dedicated to our, to our district and to our community. And it's exciting and I'm willing to be the superintendent of the district even though I'm a short timer now. So, with that, I would take any questions the commission may have of me.
First off, I just want to say, man, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for being the bridge to connect the city and the school together. You have really helped create, unified us as a whole. And so, man, just thank you, man, just for your passion and your purpose and not being afraid to take on those challenges. You've done a remarkable job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's, it's, I would love to take credit, but honestly, it's the people I work with. And the people I work with are phenomenal. So, I get to look good in a lot of areas because of people in my office and the teachers and the staff and the custodians and maintenance people and really just all of USD 53. So, thank you for that compliment, but my compliment goes to the people that I get to work with every day.
Yeah, Dr. Mike Roth, I wanted the hundred and forty-three that got the certification on that, and that's, that's free to them.
That's correct. That's, that's in agreement that we worked out with Kansas City, Kansas Community College. What that, what that really entailed was really some forward thinking from the school board at the time. We had a vacant building. We worked it out to where they could have that vacant building rent-free, but all of our kids and all the programs are funded by them, but our kids get to attend it free. And so, yes, all of those certifications and all the certifications really since two thousand and sixteen, I believe is when we first initiated that, were free to kids. And so, it's really paid dividends and it's been a great investment for our district because we are invested in kids. So, thank you for asking that question because I think a lot of people forgot that.
Right. No, it's a great opportunity because otherwise, some people, even after high school, might not be able to afford it. But this way, you're leading them on the right path.
Yes.
To success. And then, I just also wanted to bring up, I bring this up every year because I really enjoy it, but I was able to do Reading Across America. I think all of us did that. So, it was fun. I ran to the first graders this year and they're just jelly beans. So, it was a, it was a good experience.
I know that they, I know that they look forward to that as well. So, they're super excited when they get adults that come in and do that.
Do that. But yeah, and thank you for your leadership and everything that you've done.
Well, I look forward to coming to the Foundation Breakfast in the morning as, every year, except when we had COVID, we didn't do it, I guess. But it's so good to hear the good things that the schools do. And as an alum myself, I, you know, it's, it just gets better. It just gets better. I did Read Across America with the third grade and I was just amazed at how thoughtful. We were reading about superheroes having a bad day and how you, what you do, you know? And the thoughtful, I mean, I like to ask a lot of questions when I'm reading and the kids were so thoughtful in their answers and how they care for each other. So, I really, I appreciate your leadership and the leadership and the hard work of the teachers and the schools.
Thank you.
Dr. Roth, can you, Roth?
Roth.
Long as, sort of like the both of us are going to have a conversation right now.
Oh, you know my name very well. Dr. Roth, can you, give me an idea of what kinds of certifications they got? Culinary arts, I know is in there.
So, I know fifty of, fifty of those hundred and forty-three were in Certified Nurses Aid and fifty of them were in culinary. The others were divided kind of, I don't want to say the number because I don't have those memorized. I know the two fifty are correct. And then, the others are through HVAC was like fourteen or fifteen. Construction Trades was right around the double-digit and Electrical was about the same. So, it was really split up over five. It was HVAC, Electrical, Construction Trades, CNA, and Culinary. And there's OSHA certifications in there as well that we had a few kids with the OSHA certifications.
That's great.
Thank you. And thanks for what you've done in your time here. Can you tell us a little bit about where you're going?
I, I really don't know because
He's going to relax.
You know, in the NFL right now, they're talking about free agency. So, whatever, there's getting a lot bigger contracts out there than what's been offered to me this time. And I'm a free agent. So, I'm not really sure what I'm going to do. I've got, I just have no idea yet. So, something will come up, I know.
Well, you're certainly too young to retire.
Well, I just, you know, I've just had great jobs. So, I look a lot younger than I am.
That's good. We'll see you tomorrow.
Good for you.
Yeah, appreciate the update, Dr. Roth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your
Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Second item on the agenda, Main Street, 2022 Annual Reports. New seat in the opening of the year. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Okay, make sure I can do this.
Is it just on the PowerPoint?
Dopey?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay. All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. It's nice to see some familiar faces. I know some of you I've, I'm just now meeting, but I am Debbie Deere and I am the new Executive Director of the Leavenworth Main Street Program. And so, happy to be serving in that role now. I've been a part of the Leavenworth and Lansing communities for thirty-plus years, previously as a business owner for twenty-seven years. But now, I'm excited to be at Main Street and I hope that I can bring that experience to the table there and, you know, do some good things together. I also have new staff as well. We have a whole new team there. So, Tanya Mine is our new Assistant Director and Jenny O'Neil is our Administrative Assistant. Both of those are part-time positions that work with me there as well. But I just want to say that in, in my new position, I am very committed to working in partnership with the city. It's very important to me to build positive relationships with everyone and just respect the support that you've always shown our organization and the good work that we do. I met with Penny and Paul recently and, you know, we've talked a lot about the importance of the collaboration and the positive communication moving forward. And I very strongly want to do that. And I think that Main Street has a responsibility to serve as an advocate for the city, to the business owners, both existing and new as we move forward. And also, just to do that in a, with that communication, to make referrals, to serve as a liaison in whatever way I need to. So, I look forward to that. And I also just ask you, as I have many others, to give, give us some grace and patience while we acclimate to our new roles and just appreciate your ongoing support. So, here's a list of our Board of Directors for your reference. Of course, tonight of all nights, the one that I left off was Melissa Bauer, who is the city representative. So, I apologize about it, wherever she's at. So, she is our city Leavenworth representative, as well as Christie Lee from the CVB. And so, I've been working closely with both of them. So, in addition to the city, you know, I, again, as important as our partnership is with you, it's also important with the other economic development organizations, CVB, LCDC, The Chamber, Grow Leavenworth County. So, I serve as an ex officio on some of these boards and as a board member on Grow Leavenworth County. And I've also made efforts recently to make connections with Fort Leavenworth representatives because I want to make sure we stay up to date in that connection and the importance of the military presence in our community. And so, again, just important to have those partnerships. And I've been attending ribbon cuttings with The Chamber, appreciate that opportunity. And, you know, my goal is to obviously not duplicate, but just to complement each other's missions and visions and work together collaboratively in the best interest of the community. And so, I look forward to doing that and I'm staying in communication with those leaders from those organizations routinely. The funding sources, so here's a breakdown of our funding sources that Main Street uses for our operations throughout the year. Our membership and investor dues are our number one source of revenue. And so, I am working on building those relationships, meeting our business owners, ongoing efforts to recruit new businesses. And I'll speak to that more in a minute. Obviously, very important as well is our investment that the city makes in our organization every year. That is twenty percent of our budget and we appreciate that. And it is very crucial to the ongoing operations and continued success that we have. Our promotions, fundraising efforts and events are twenty-five percent of our operating budget. And then, we have our upper story loft rental and we also ran out a small office space within our downstairs space. So, that constitutes about eighteen or eight percent. And then, we have outside marketing and grants that we also get. Pointing out the CVB grants that we get, I'll talk to that again more in a minute. And then, we also get some funds that I don't consider part of really our operating, general operating, but from the Kansas Department of Commerce that allow us to distribute those back out to businesses for funding opportunities. And, you know, back to CVB, we do have the shared marketing and sponsorships from them that are very important. And I visited with Christie recently about those and the ongoing efforts for that. And it's greatly appreciated. So, organization and membership, we are working, you know, as I said, for ongoing members. We currently have two hundred and seventeen members that we're in contact with. We've been able to recruit new members in two thousand and twenty-three already. And when I sent out this PowerPoint, we were at eleven and now I think we're at about fourteen new members. And we have three or four prospects that I'm going to be visiting with in the near future. And so, you know, that, that is exciting and we take very seriously our, those relationships and keeping those positive and again, providing the opportunities for them for funding and then also to make the referrals and things and serve as a liaison to the city. Another goal that I really have is to create more public awareness and education for the public about what exactly it is that Main Street does. Because I think there's maybe people that know we're there, but they aren't quite sure what we do. And so, I've started a new video called Downtown with Debbie. And we're going to try doing this every week. It's going to be on Facebook and YouTube and our website. And it's going to be talking about, you know, the, the things that Main Street does, how we can benefit the businesses and community, how, how can we best partner with them, how they can get involved and why that's a good investment for them to make and how that can help grow our economic development and economic vitality in the community. And so, those are things that I'm really passionate about trying to do. And then, those videos will also highlight the new businesses that are coming in, showcase those, talking to existing business owners, you know, doing some individual videos with them to get people to understand what are the products or services that they offer and let, give them a moment in the spotlight to kind of brag about what they do. And we're also looking at new marketing and promotion ideas in order to be able to get the word out better. Our promotions are a lot about what people know what we do as far as the events and things that we do, but it's a lot of, of time that we spend on this. Our goal is to get both local and outside, out-of-town visitors to, to shop, to dine, to play, to stay in Leavenworth and let them emphasize what we have going on locally that should keep them here. So, the forty-plus events that we have, you can see here some of the, the numbers of attendees that we have. And these are, you know, guestimates to the best of our abilities. We do pretty much know how many alive after five tickets we sell. But these events are created to, one, get patrons through the front doors of some of the, of the businesses to, to shop and to dine and to play. Some of the other ones just simply attract visitors to the downtown area. And then, we're hoping that once they get here, they can see what else is going on and they'll either want to stay or they'll want to come back, you know, again for another visit. You know, one example of what we're going to try to do in two thousand and twenty-three is we have our Summer Concert Series where we have a concert every second Saturday evening downtown at Haymarket. And we're going to try to create an opportunity to, to have that be an all-day opportunity for people. You know, don't just come in the evening because a lot of businesses are closed then and they can't go in and take advantage of some of those things they do. So, let's, let's find ways to promote specials and to get business owners on board. And let's get them in town all day long and then they'll stay at the concert and they'll enjoy that. And then, hopefully, they'll go to some of the after-hours establishments, a couple of new ones in town that are, you know, drawing people in. And, and then, maybe they'll stay. Maybe they'll spend the night. So, you know, some, some new things, ways to do that. Because we want them to stay and we want them to come back again. So, some of the numbers that I know you're probably interested in are listed here. And so, some of the, the promotions that we can actually track dollars on are listed here. And, you know, one of these is a month-long, other ones are just a day-long. But to the best of my abilities, I was able to figure up about a minimum of two hundred and five thousand dollars. And that doesn't include sales tax that, that these, revenue that these generated. And it also doesn't include extra dollars that are being spent when they're doing these activities in shopping and dining and hotels and that kind of thing. And so, we hope that in looking at this kind of number, that you will see a good return on your investment that you make with us and the opportunities and the possibilities that it can bring to generate revenue for our community. And we have some new ideas for two thousand and twenty-three in addition to the one I mentioned. For right now in March, we have Main Street shenanigans going on. And so, that's similar to our Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree where people can have a stamp card and go around and get, get that stamped depending on how much money they spend. And this is for not just retail, but also for the restaurants and the pubs and lounges and bars. And, and then, we're going to do a pub crawl in the early summer and we're going to do a shopping and dining passbook starting early summer throughout the end of the year. So, those are some new ideas in addition to the other events that we already do.
And what's the pub crawl?
So, it's going to be a one-day event and you're going to be able to buy a ticket and you're going to go around to the different participating pubs and bars and lounges, breweries. And they're going to have specials going on and you're going to be able to get your, you know, card punched and say you were there. We're probably going to have some t-shirts to wear, you know, get your friends, get your family and just, and that's going to get you to walking around downtown, hopefully. And it's, you know, maybe you're going to, going into, yes, walking. And, you know, get you to going into other businesses and stuff too.
Then you can take the bus home.
Yes.
You don't have to worry too much about pub crawl. I know you don't drink.
But it's still a lot of fun, even for non-drinkers.
Come down there and enjoy it.
You can make the rounds. But again, just creating those experience, that experiences that keep people wanting to come back. We have a design committee that is trying to create ways to enhance the beauty of our business district. And you can read here some of the ways that we're trying to do that. But again, a big shout out and thank you to the CVB for the tourism grants that we've been able to use in the past. And we have ideas on, you know, maybe how we can try to do that again in the future. I've met with Christie and I appreciate her ideas on, you know, some of that and how we can do that in the future as well as Melissa. And we've, we've talked about those kinds of things. And I also want to meet soon, I haven't gotten to do it yet, with Parks and Rec, to talk to them about, you know, what do some of these ideas mean? What are the codes? You know, what are the permits? What are, what are the maintenance idea? You know, I mean, everything, it all intertwines. And so, rather than putting the cart before the horse, I mean, we have a lot of dreamers and we have a lot of ideas, but we have to make sure that we're all on the same page with, you know, making that work successfully. And, and I also want to start inviting some of the city personnel to our design committee meetings so that they can be present and available to answer specific questions about the project that we're talking about, you know, so that they can help us understand, you know, where they're coming from with some of the logistics of everything and whether or not it's even something that we should consider pursuing, you know, for, for them. So, there's a list here of some of the things that we've had in the past. And, you know, like I said, we've got a lot of dreamers. So, there's a lot of ideas out there, just not enough time in the day sometimes. Our economic vitality, it's another component of the Main Street mission and it's to work with businesses to provide resources, tools and information to help them either start a business or, you know, keep their existing businesses successful. And we do plan to have some upcoming sessions and invite again city personnel to join us at those to maybe provide clarity and understanding for them, for business owners as they start their businesses, they maintain their businesses, they renovate their buildings, those kinds of things. And we'll have different topics at different meeting times to do that. And, you know, again, as I mentioned in the beginning, you know, we have a responsibility at Main Street to serve as a resource and referral organization. And so, we'll continue to, to, you know, refer people to the city for the funding opportunities and things that you have available. We give out that list all the time to people as they're calling or lists of ways to, buildings that are available, available properties. And so, if there's any information like that that you can help me gather, I greatly appreciate it because we get that question a lot. And then, we'll continue to give out some of the loans and things like that that we have. And, you know, first and foremost too, we just want to make sure that they know the Main Street office is a warm and a friendly and a welcoming and a confidential space where they can come and ask questions and share ideas and, and, you know, maybe start that journey of making their dream, you know, a reality. I wanted to point out some of the Main Street awards that were given out at our annual banquet in December. These are businesses and individuals that, you know, have a great partnership and relationship with Main Street, very well-deserving awards. Many of them have been here for a very long time. And so, you know, just a shout out to them and a big thank you for what they contribute to downtown Leavenworth and, and the economy and the community. So, that's it. You know, I'm trying to keep it short and sweet for you tonight. Thank you. I'm happy to answer questions.
Very good presentation.
And here is my contact information. If you, please stop by and say hi.
A quick question. Has there been any discussion with the chambers about partnering, collaborating on events, attention for the summertime?
We have started preliminary conversations about ways that we can partner together and enhance what we have going on and come up with new things. And, you know, like I, the first thing, like I mentioned, Jen and I met and she had approached her ambassadors about whether or not Main Street could be a part of their ribbon-cutting ceremonies and just, you know, making sure that we were all there together, again, on the same page, showing a unified front on, you know, supporting our businesses. And the same with events. And so, you know, The Chamber has a little different mission and vision than we do, but I would love to work with anybody and everybody on, you know, how that could look and to make it the best it can be.
Is that, is that going to happen? That you're going to be able to attend those? You think the ribbon cutting?
Yes, absolutely. We've already started doing that. And, you know, we're going to be wearing our green to represent Main Street. Chambers is going to be wearing their red. I got to add a few more green things to my wardrobe. I didn't have very much green.
St. Patrick's Day is coming up.
Yes. And we're going to be in the parade. We're going to do that. Anybody's welcome to walk with us. And we're going to be passing out the Main Street shenanigans, stamp cards at the parade. So, people can hopefully, the goal of that is to keep them downtown on that day. You know, don't just come to the parade and leave and go home. Come to the parade and stay all day and, and do everything that there is to do with the merchants and shopping and all that. So, thank you very much for your time. Any more?
Yeah, Debbie, real quick. So, you mentioned eleven new members this year for two thousand and twenty-three, maybe fourteen so far. What do you attribute that to? Just for reaching out to them and trying to get them on board or?
I, I think so. And I think some of them, you know, are just kind of anxious to see what new leadership is going to bring to the table and how we can accommodate them and what kind of partnerships we're going to be able to form together and, you know, just make, make their job a little bit easier, hopefully. But there's a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of hard work. And I say blood, sweat and tears all the time because it's true. And so, I, you know, I hope that they'll continue to get in touch with us. We're, we're reaching out as well as they're finding us too. And, you know, ways that we're trying to help people And, you know, ways that we're trying to help people find us easier, we're updating the website, we're enhancing our social media, you know, we're trying to do these videos and stuff so that people realize what we're there for and what we can help them do.
Sure, sure. And that $205,000 for 2022, what was that connected with again? I may have lost some of these.
So it was the events that were listed on there. We have Shop Small Saturday, we have our Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree, Christmas in July and Main Street Bucks.
Okay, that was those underneath there?
Yeah. And so that's where that originated, that came from.
And I was just curious, how did you find those details exactly?
Well, as, as those-
I wasn't seeing a number, you know?
As those events were happening, the former leadership had ways of tracking, you know, how much, like those stamp cards were coming in and they were stamped as to the dollar amounts that were actually being spent. You know, they were in communication in different ways with the merchants on, you know, what did it look like on Shop Small Saturday? How many sales did you have? You know, how much did your promotion or your special generate? How much money did that bring into you? You know, where was your, where were the people coming from, that kind of thing?
Okay. And I know you said you've got a lot to kind of unpack and get used to. Do you have maybe a target number you'd like to shoot for this year for economic impact?
Let me get back to you.
A million dollars.
As much as possible. I mean, I have some really exciting, in my brain anyway, fundraising ideas that are going to bring people to the community and really have a lot of fun and we're going to highlight some of the history of, we're so unique here. You know, I talk to other, I'm getting ready to talk to a lot more of the other Main Street programs in Kansas. But, you know, we have a very unique community that has a lot to offer. And so I think we need to capitalize on that and really bring awareness about that. And also hopefully in the process of doing that, make some money.
Well, I already like where your mind is at and where you're going and I appreciate the update, so.
Thank you. That's good to hear. I'm happy to be here.
Couple of questions. One, does anybody on your staff or on the Board of Directors voluntarily have the knowledge and the willingness to complete grant applications?
We do have a couple of people that are, you know, a little more experienced with that. I've had a lot, I've had more experience like managing grant programs and, you know, working within them, but I have some experience. So yeah, we need to get some folks on board that can help with that.
And I wish I could remember the second question.
I know somebody in this room that's really good at grant writing.
Somebody's already nabbed me for that.
Oh, hey.
I was not trying.
No, I know. I'm just giving her a hard time. Well, and, you know, if you don't have your question out, please reach out, you know? I'm happy to-
Certainly. Oh, yeah. Are you finding that there's any competition between Main Street and the Chamber to get members, you know? People who've got businesses that, I mean, are they all wanting to join both or?
We're going to encourage them to join both. And Jen and I are going to partner together. Tell them why that's important and what we can do for them and what she's got to offer and how that can come together and why it's worth their money. You know, if you're a Main Street investor, as a business, $250 a year, it boils down to $22 a month. You can make that in, you know, in tenfold with the events that we're having and offering, you know, throughout the year. So we hope that we can sell it as, you know, a worthwhile investment. And, you know, we're not just there in partnership, we're there in friendship too because this is the community to do that in. And, you know, I like to create, it's just been in my brain forever with my business and anything I do in life, you know, the Main Street office can be that home away from home. And, you know, we have our beautiful mural on the side of our building and it's a very welcoming thing when people come through town, it's easy to find us. And we want people to come in and see us. You can come in and just to chat and have coffee or you can come in and really need to talk about some serious business and we're there for all of it.
Certainly. Thank you.
Is there anything else the city can do to help support you?
Just, you know, help come to our events and encourage people to come to our events and to, you know, send them my direction if they have questions and, you know, help us get that public awareness and education out there. You know, if you have a group of some kind that you want me to come talk to that maybe needs to learn about Main Street, I'm happy to do that. You know, just getting that word out. You know, word of mouth is a lot of times the best way to get things, you know, out there. And so anything you can do like that to help or if you have a question, you know, I'm happy to answer it.
And Debbie, I'm sorry and thank you for that. And, you know, I know you're, like I said, putting everything together. I would definitely encourage you, the more you can track, the more you can measure.
Absolutely.
And I think over time, the more teeth you put into this, I think it's going to help us all to get over just the warm fuzzies about a program like this. But like, hey, what's it actually, you know, returning?
I mean, you, there's a lot of people wanting a piece of your pie, you know? I mean, and I know there's never enough to go around. And so I understand that and, you know, I just had that conversation with my assistant today. I said, we were putting some things in place to better track these numbers because I know that there's more there, but, you know, maybe it just wasn't kept track of the way it needs to. And so you're right, you know, we need to make sure we're doing that to the best of our abilities. And the other thing I want to start finding out from people when they, you know, I want to start tracking, how many phone calls did we get? You know, how many people did we refer to the city? How many people did, you know, got funding opportunities and followed through with that because we made those referrals? So I want to be able to come back next year and share that kind of information with you.
She'll bring more information at our budget hearings as well.
Yes, yeah, I'll be seeing you again in a few months, I hear.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, thank you.
All right. No, I'm excited that you're here, Debbie, and I know you're really ambitious and I've known you for a while, so I'm excited to see what you're going to come up with.
Okay.
And I'll be there at some of the events too.
All right.
Good job. Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night.
Have a great one. Next item on your agenda, two kitchens, Police Department 2022 Annual Report.
And the title of this is?
I know I had 174 slides. It's a little bit of a staff riot, so I cut that down. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, pleased to be here on behalf of the men and women of the Leavenworth Police Department to report, to give you the 2022 Annual Report. For many, many years now, the Police Department has put together a report that encapsulates and gives an overview of the major events relating to crime and traffic and animal control, all the things that we do throughout the year to try and provide for the public safety for our community. There's a couple of things that I'd like to do to start the conversation, one of which is to tell you that the Police Department collects just a massive amount of data every day about all of the things that we do. And certainly not all of it is contained in the report, it's more of a general overview. I always get a little fearful that we put too much information in, it'll be the size of a phone book and people won't really read it and pay particular attention to it. And so if there's something that's not in there you have a question about, I can certainly answer that off the top of my head or I can get that to you within a day or two if it's not contained in the report. And then the other part of the conversation that I like to make sure people understand is that as much data as we have, and some of it's very favorable certainly, that's not the only thing that's important to us. Equally as important to the data that we have is how people feel about the community. And as I travel throughout the community and I do community engagements and I visit with people and talk to groups, I try and gauge that. That's a little harder to measure, you know, because even if you see this information, it really doesn't have a whole lot of meaning to you if you had your car stolen last year. If you had your business broken into and there was damage done, you feel differently about that. That's more personal. And so, you know, how people feel about the city, do we feel safe? Do the folks feel safe here? That's as equally important as we move through. Okay? So this is not the end-all, be-all, it's only half of what we do. But off we go, let's talk about the Police Department and what we did last year. Now, that's the organizational chart. We have 57 sworn police officers working for the Police Department and we have 22 civilian employees. That represents where they're all spread out. Essentially, it's mostly officers and detectives. My message to the general public is what I generally lead off with. I think the big, important part of the conversation is the crime was down pretty significantly last year. Part one and two, part two crimes were down by about 18%. That's favorable. That is the fifth year in a row now that the crime rate has trended downward and sometimes, you know, over the double digits, you know, pretty consistently down. And so that's favorable. I feel like the crime rate's as low as it's been in quite some time. And so I think that can be attributed mostly to the hard work of the police officers and the detectives that are out there doing their work. A little bit of a caveat to that, some of that reduction can be contributed to CCA being closed. CCA was part of our jurisdiction. And when they closed at the end of the year before, we didn't have to go out there and respond. That represented about 75 to 100 times a year, we had to go there for a variety of things. Inmates assaulting other inmates, inmates assaulting staff, theft, those kinds of things. And so when they had a crime, they called the Police Department and we would go out there. And so about 100 times a year, so that's no longer part of the equation. And so although we did have some reductions, it's not quite as dramatic, some of that can be addressed too. We still continue to deal principally, our primary problem, what we spend most of our time on is domestic violence. That's our highest call load. Probably two and a half times every 24 hours of every day of the year, we're responding to some type of domestic violence call. That's the biggest crime that we have in the city that we're dealing with. And then the other broader issue is employment. Just like every other industry that you might have read about throughout the course of the, you know, nurses and teachers, police officers, we're all sort of struggling to get people to come into the workforce. We're doing a lot better in terms of retention. We've made some structural changes inside the Police Department to be, you know, put ourselves in a better position, you know, due to your support and Mr. Kramer's support. We've done some of that and so the retention is a little easier. We don't quite have as much discussion about officers leaving to go somewhere else. And so I'm happy about that and I hope that that continues. And so let's talk about a little bit more specifics relative to the Police Department. Here's a breakdown of some of the, oh, it's going up there, not on mine. Sorry about that. So this is longevity. If you look over here to the left-hand side, that sort of breaks down the experience level. The big blue one right there that says 27%, that represents officers that have two years or less and that's why some of my hair falls out and a little rapid race, rapid rate. Young police officers have enthusiasm and they really want to do a good job, but sometimes they make missteps and so takes a little time to correct that. But the one, the bottom left and the bottom right, the green and the burgundy color there, I'm happy that that number is growing. Those are really where we have the core of the officers at. That three-year to 10-year mark really is where an officer starts to come into their home and really do well. And so I'm happy to see that that section sort of grows a little bit. There's our annual budget, it's a reflection of the city's budget on the right and then we're a little bit more than $8 million in terms of how much it costs to run the Police Department every year. Community engagement, one of the fundamental principles that we do is try and engage with the community on a lot of occasions. Every few weeks, we are trying to engage in something. What you see here is one of my favorite pictures, that's a Girl Scout troop of girls that were five and six years old. They came to the Police Department because they were trying to get their robot badge, which I didn't know was a thing, but it is a thing. And so we brought out all of our robots. That's our bomb robot there, Sergeant Wooten showing them, they were thrilled to death about that. We had our drone that we flew for them. We've got some smaller tactical robots that we get them, they got to play with and operate. And so they were able to get their robot badge thanks to the Police Department, excited about that. I didn't even know that was a thing, but there you go. So we do a lot of that. The haunted house, coffee with a cop, touch a truck, all of those events, we try and get out there and engage with the community in non-enforcement measures so that they can be a little bit more comfortable around us, which is generally helpful overall. Okay, so some of the numbers, calls for service. On the far right-hand side, you see 20,641 calls for service. That is a, every single time the member of the community calls the Police Department, they're asking for some kind of assistance. So just a little over 20,000 times, that represents about 56 times every 24 hours, the members of the public are calling us and asking for some kind of assistance, police, fire, EMS, animal control, something like that, okay? The bottom chart represents the number of criminal reports we took, just shy of 3,500. And you kind of see those numbers from about 2017 kind of start to trend down, they continued to turn down. You'll see that reflected in the crime reports as well. Part one and part two crimes, way back when, I think it was J. Edgar Hoover himself invented this plan, part one crimes are the seven most serious crimes that we deal with, part two crimes are everything else. You saw that part one crimes and part two crimes were both trending down, but overall, we saw a pretty significant drop in the crimes that were reported last year. So I'm very happy about that. Response times, let's talk a little bit about response times. So of the 20,000 calls for service, on average, it sits at about four minutes and 50 seconds where someone's calling us and they've sent the police, that's generally about how long it takes us to get there. That's everything. The more serious stuff where there is a high level of danger, a crime in progress, like a domestic where someone's really in danger, we sit at about three and a half minutes. And so I'm pretty satisfied with those numbers, but let's talk about that a little bit. They can be a little bit deceiving, so we have to apply some common sense to that. I'm not going to tell you that somebody came to the Police Department to report a theft and they had to sit there for 25 or 30 minutes. That happens once in a while. But let's say that an officer's driving around and on their MDT, a robbery call flashes up for them to evaluate. A lot of things depend on a lot of things. What's going on in the community? What's going on right now? How many officers we have and what they're dealing with? If the robbery is this, someone walked into the Justice Center and they're reporting something that happened three or four days ago, that doesn't make the crime less important, but we're not going to drop everything that we're doing and respond with lights and sirens to that. Whereas the difference would be a robbery, like a convenience store just got robbed at gunpoint and the suspect just left the area, we're going to get there in a fairly short order. So these numbers, what you see are averages. On average, it was a little less than five minutes for us to get to almost every call and then the more serious stuff was a little more, about three and a half minutes. And so I'm pretty happy with that. Obviously, we can get better, but I think if you read the newspaper, you saw something two weeks ago where in Austin, Texas, for example, people are waiting 45 minutes on hold on 911 just to get an answer and we're certainly not anywhere near that. We're, I'm satisfied that we're getting there about as quick as we can, so.
Geez. How does that compare to previous years?
That's the first time I actually calculated it because I think somebody asked me that and I have a general idea, but we actually took all the numbers and we did some math and we did some calculations. And so I feel like that's probably pretty consistent from terms before. We haven't had, we haven't, you know, much change in manpower and staffing and those kinds of things. And so I'm pretty, but we'll, moving forward, we'll keep that, we'll keep that. But I'm pretty satisfied that we're getting there broad, in the broadest sense, no one's waiting for us to get there when there's an emergency. We're getting there and we're getting there with enough officers in a fairly short amount of time to handle it, okay?
So crime in progress at this moment, call 911. What's the timeline on that?
Depends on what it is. Crime in progress, someone did shoplifting, my take is five or six minutes. A stabbing or a guy got shot in the leg, probably a minute, maybe less than that. But that also depends, right? What's going on? If everybody's tied up on something really, really big and we have one, it may take us a little bit. But we're getting there in those emergency situations in ample amount of time to help and deal with it.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, sir. Domestic cases, again, you know, this is our biggest case, call for service that we had, a little 449, it's kind of trended in the right direction the last couple of years, pretty happy about that. Still dangerous, still probably the most violent stuff that we deal with. Work a lot with our county attorney's office and trying to really enhance those arrests and those prosecutions on those cases. You know, the latest trend has to do with strangulation, we're seeing a lot of that. And so we're really focusing on that in terms of training, recognition, prosecution, that sort of thing to help sort of get those numbers down. But that's really what we spend most of our time. Again, about two times every 24 hours, we're going to a domestic violence call. Mental health, again, mental health. I feel like you're seeing a representation, a lot of people have recognized over the last couple of years that the resources for mental health needed to be improved. And so we're seeing a little bit of that in those numbers.[1689.54] And so we're seeing a little bit of that in those numbers. Whereas we've had, you know, some people that were really, really troubled, that needed some services, not just the police arresting them and taking them to jail or the emergency room, really putting them in a position where they can be successful. And we're starting to see some of that, so I'm happy about those numbers going down. This again is about once every three days, probably the second most dangerous and violent cases that we have where people are mentally ill and impaired, armed. We're dealing with those and those are pretty dangerous. Sir?
And Chief, so, so the suicide calls, is that, that's a call in to your department saying there's somebody risking this or what is that?
So usually it's one of two things. It's a family member calling in to report that their family members are distressed. They're either threatening suicide themselves, threatening suicide into harm to the family, so we're going to that. The person calls us and says, I'm really having trouble. We get some calls from the hospital that a person is making suicidal ideations, that kind of thing. On the great occasion, if someone calls the suicide hotline, the big 1-800 number that's available, we'll get them, referring them to us. The VA has a lot of resources for vets that are having trouble. And so we get it from, in just about everywhere. If a particular person is recognizing that someone's having crisis and making suicidal ideations, they're typically calling out, so we get out there and try and help. Criminal activity, again, we break everything down by just about every category. You can see, you see that, you know, we have patrol zones. The left is a city map and that's broken down. We have five patrol districts. And so when there's a crime, we break it down by the time, the location, the address, those kinds of things. And so we really put all that information out for the public to look and you can kind of make reference to that. Criminal activity in terms of person's crime, that's a 10-year trend where it kind of gives you the specific crimes. The bottom left where it says homicide rate, robberies and assault, that's four of the seven part one crimes that I talked about. Those are the serious crimes. So the one that gets my attention the most on the top right, we had four homicides last year. And that is typically a little higher than we've seen, but you know, I would just tell you that all four of those cases have been solved. The perpetrator has either been prosecuted or is awaiting prosecution. We've identified, we don't have any outstanding cases. You know, again, we need to try and get that number down. Homicides typically are involved in domestic violence, mental illness, something like that. The things that we see with the calls are reflected in those tragedies like that.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back one slide?
Yes, sir. One more?
One more.
Yes, sir.
Homicides, where's the fourth one go? Do you know?
Hmm, that might be a typo. I'll have to look and find that out. But we have three right there, right?
Yeah. I know it was four.
And there's four. So we missed one, I think. That's probably a typo. I'll figure that out and put that up there.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I think it was area one. So it should probably reflect two, and there were two up in the northeast part, I think. And we'll get that fixed.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Property crimes, the same thing. We break that down by the geographical region, by the number, time, date, location, all that kind of stuff. There's a similar kind of representation there where it's kind of going down a little bit over the course of the last five years. So theft, auto theft, burglary and arson are the remaining part seven crimes. I'm sorry, part one crimes of the seven. Part one crimes reported total overall. So on the left is representation, those are all part one crimes. So any of those, those are the big ones that we deal with. You can see that those numbers have dropped pretty significantly over the course of the last few years and that's trending in the right direction. Pretty happy about that. Clearance rates, we solve about half of those. When we have a crime that's reported to us, either through arrest or the detectives solving it, we solve about half of those crimes. I will tell you the same thing I tell everybody about that, even though we only solve about half of them, we probably know 70% of the time who did it, so we just can't prove it. We get witnesses and victims that don't want to cooperate for fear or some reason like that. So we actually solve some, but we know a couple of more, you know, just from experience and that sort of thing. And that applies to everything. Part two crimes, again, that's everything else, minor stuff, that's going down too. Pretty happy about that. Continuing in the right direction there. Clearances, again, overall, we're solving just a little bit more than seven out of 10 of those crimes. Okay? And that's a little higher because those are usually in person. Like if somebody's fighting in front of the police, I mean, we see who they are and we arrest them, so that's solved, right? That kind of thing. And then overall total, again, we're just a little bit right around six out of 10 total crimes being solved, but we probably know a few more that are being solved. Here's some of the information about the detectives. You know, they were assigned, you know, 472 cases. That's when we have an idea that there's leads to follow up. We give them the cases and they take those cases and they run with them and they're solving, you know, those cases in those numbers. So they do a pretty great job. Arrests, that's a representation of how many people were arrested. 1,386 adults and 81 kids. That's about right.
I noticed the, the minor, yeah, the juveniles. That's the lowest you've ever had there.
Some of that is reflected by the fact that we don't have JDC anymore. Okay, that's a couple of years now we've not had that. So it makes it a little more complicated to arrest a kid. Whereas before, we would take the kid into custody and transport them to JDC and then they would make a decision about parents or, you know, that kind of thing. So we don't have that option anymore. So it's more, most of the time, it's a summons where we're notifying the kid and the parent that you're being summoned to court for a particular crime. A kid has weed at high school or a phone they stole or shoplifted or something like that. If it's a serious crime where they did something really serious, like a violent person's crime, we take them to custody and with the approval of the right group, we can take them to the Windout County Juvenile Detention Facility and they stay down there. That happens about six or eight times totally a year, not a lot, because it's a logistical issue and it takes a pretty high level crime to get there. But that's what we do if we have a serious crime.
I thought you were going to tell me the kids were just starting to grow a little better.
We'd go with that if you were, that's fine. That's not fine. That's not exactly what happens at all, right? Future generation of police work available right there. That's what that is. Again, arrests by area, you can see there, I always tell people to be cautious about area too. That's where the Justice Center is. And so a lot of people go to jail for certain things and then we find out they have a warrant while they're in jail for us. And so we go and we make the arrest and that's where it counts as an arrest. And so it's a little higher right there. Domestic violence stuff, by area, by race, by age, by gender, where it is in the community, that sort of thing. You can take a look at that. Narcotics enforcement, here's some information that's important at the bottom. Let's look at the bottom one a little bit. That represents the kinds of calls that we're dealing with that are related to drug and drug arrests and prosecution. The one that worries me the most is meth and fentanyl. Those are really, really powerful, really, really dangerous drugs that cause people to really get out of sorts when they're involved in that sort of thing. Fentanyl, those are people that we've arrested. It's much more complicated than that. From January 1st till about the middle of February, we went to 10 fatal or non-fatal fentanyl overdoses where EMS was able to respond and bring them back. But not only are we seeing fentanyl as a critical problem both here and all across the country, mostly it is either they have it with them or they're overdosing from it and that's really absorbing a bunch of our resources. And so we spend a lot of time trying to identify and solve people who are selling fentanyl or in possession of fentanyl. That's our cases where we're spending a lot of our investigations on trying to resolve that. Meth is the same thing. There's still a little cocaine, there's still a little heroin, and once in a while, we catch somebody with a joint, they're smoking weed or something, it's still illegal and they get a ticket for that.
And some of these can be multiple, right?
Yes. Usually if they have fentanyl, they also have opioids, which are some sort of pill that they've gotten from somewhere, or maybe they've taken it from an elderly person or something like that. So that's some information about the kind of work we're doing on drug cases.
Your officers have Narcan with them all the time?
We're working on that. EMS and the fire department have it and so it's readily available. We're going to get some Narcan for an exposure by an officer accidentally for some reason. But we're, I'm pretty comfortable that EMS and fire have it and it's pretty readily available if we have a problem.
Thank you.
Sure. Traffic accidents, and so this is a representation of traffic crashes that we've had. You know, some non-injury ones and some injury ones and some alcohol-related ones. That kind of gives you some information about that. Citations, we wrote a little more than 2,700 citations. You know, probably half of those represent speeding tickets or running the red light at Fourth and Shawnee.
Yep.
As you can see, those numbers are going to go up a little bit. We're starting to have some improvement in staffing, so our traffic unit is full. Officers write tickets, but the traffic unit focuses on that. And so I'm happy that those numbers are going to start to probably hopefully continue to go up.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Since the increase in the speed limit on Fourth Street, has there been any new tickets written?
Yes, because people were probably driving 15 to 17 miles an hour over and so that gets the attention of the officers. Just because we changed it by five miles an hour, that has not represented in less tickets. It's about the same. It's about the same because people are really sometimes a little bit out of sorts too much. And so we have to give them a reminder not to do that again. An expensive one sometimes, so.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Here's how we do by race and gender. We always keep that information for people to take a look at if they have questions about anything like that. We always do that for everything. Domestics, anything that we're doing enforcement-wise, we break that down by gender and race and all kinds of stuff, age, all that stuff. Traffic location, traffic accident locations, you see right there, Fourth and Limit is the big one this year. That's a little bit of a change. It's almost always Tenth and Eisenhower by Walmart. And so we've seen a little reduction of that. Fourth and Limit, for some reason, jumped off the, jumps off the plate there as the big one. But you see Tenth and Eisenhower is a close second. And so that's a little bit of an anomaly. And so those kind of give people the folks about where it is that we spend our time in traffic investigations and traffic accidents and enforcement to try and get those numbers down. The arrests and alcohol-related arrests, you see that. We're down a little bit in that regard. I think we had some staffing issues that probably are mostly influenced by that. So hopefully that'll be back up next year to where it needs to be. Really need to work on that, you know, to keep the impairment accidents down, which are really, really dangerous. Here's some professional standards investigations. These are complaints about police behavior. Okay? So you see on the right, we had a total of seven complaints that some were initiated by, within the, by supervisors inside the police department and some were, three complaints outside of the police department. I think I have those right. Anytime there's a traffic, anytime there's a car chase where there's an accident or something like that, we have an automatic measure to do an investigation to look into that, to make sure that we're, the officers are in compliance with policy, stuff like that. Somebody comes in on a bias-based complaint or officers were rude or cursed at them or mistreated them in some way. And so those numbers are pretty low. You know, I'm pretty happy about that. I don't know that you can make everybody happy, but seven times out of as much as we do, I think, that's okay. I can, I can sort through that pretty well. On the left represents, we had two bias-based complaints. That means a person came in and said, the reason why you did something was by race. And so we investigated those. We did not find any officers in violation this year. And then use of force, anytime we make an arrest where we use force, on the right-hand side there, you see we did that of the, whatever it was, just shy of 2,000 times, we'd use force 109 times. So.
Use of force.
Use of force.
That's when a weapon is drawn?
No. So if I say you're under arrest and you do anything but comply with me, if you resist, if you pull away, if you run, if I have to use some sort of arm bar technique, if I have to taser you, something like that, that's a use of force. Anything other than compliance where we have to do anything to get you to cooperate with us, that's a use of force. I'll talk a little bit about with another slide here in just a second, have that broken down. But that's, a use of force is anything beyond that. Okay? So remember, about five or six months ago, I came to the commission meeting and I asked you to give me some money for the Microsoft SQL Server Enterprise Core Edition? Remember that? That's a horrible name. So we call it the Light Bright. That's what we call it. For those of you that might have been around for a few minutes and know what a Light Bright is, that looks like a Light Bright. And so we named it the Light Bright. So, not to make fun of that, but this is a tool that we're getting ready to deploy. We've been building it for a few months, but we're getting ready to deploy it. So if you take a look at that, it gives us the ability to analyze across the entire department or by an individual officer, which I'll talk about in just a minute. So for example, on the top left there, you see arrest count. So in about a six-week period, we made 84 arrests. In the sort of, right below that, it says arrest count by age. It gives us age. Just to the right of that, by gender. Just to the right of that, the way that we arrested them. We saw the crime in progress, something like that. On the bottom, by race, right next to that, where it was that it took place. So this is our, our use of metrics to analyze how the department is doing as a whole and then how an individual officer is doing as a whole. And so we can set those parameters by the entire year, by month, by shift. We can do a lot of things, but that tool that we bought, that you authorized, is what ultimately led to this, which is our ability to do a little bit more analyzing officer performance and behavior by these kinds of parameters. The next slide represents, for example, I picked Paul Ladnecki. He's one of our busier officers. And it represents what he did during that time. So he made nine arrests. You can see by age, by gender, by race, by the area, that kind of thing. And so we're building that out and getting ready to deploy that for our supervisors to use, to manage. We can use it at the command staff level to really foray into a little bit deeper analysis of what's going on out there with the officers. So for example, hypothetically speaking, if an officer made 10 arrests over a course of a period of time and they were all females, that might be an indication that there's a problem of targeting or something like that. So we would be able to look deeper into those particular arrests and see if maybe there might be a problem. Or we can just generally say, hey, we're doing fine, but this is another tool that we're going to use to analyze both our performance as an agency and the officer's shifts, detectives, all those things. Okay? Light Bright, not whatever that thing is. Yes, sir.
Officer Howard is really going at it.
Right. She's a rookie, so that's surprising. Right, yeah. That's not surprising. Maybe I should have picked her. So.
We're not going to call her out here.
So anyway, right, we're, we're excited about this as an opportunity, a tool to help us keep, keep getting better at analyzing ourselves. Use of force, as we talked about, so use of force of 109 times, that's sort of broken down how we did force. Almost all of it is at the lowest level, the sort of minor muscling techniques, arm bars, a little bit of wrestling, something like that. We tasered a few people this year. We used our baton one time on someone that was particularly violent. You might have seen that we had one lethal use of force incident and it's categorized as that because we discharged our weapon. This was the event at Fifth and Seneca where the young man was sitting at the intersection with the handgun and he charged the officers with the handgun. We discharged our weapon one time. That was investigated by the KBI. The officer was exonerated, the person was prosecuted and he was sent to prison for quite a while because he's quite, that's quite a dangerous situation. But it also had a mental illness element to it. And so, you know, these events of use of force, those are the kinds of things that were, you know, the really serious stuff.
Chief, I'm sorry, on the use of force, the verbal direction, so that, how is that use of force if you?
So let's say I say, sir, if you're under arrest and you take off running and I say, stop, and miraculously you stop and give up, which happens a few times, then that's verbal direction. I was able to talk you into surrendering without having to convince you otherwise to surrender. We have an occasional circumstance where a person is a little bit far away and we're like, hey, come here. No, I'm not coming here. Yeah, come here. And then they come here. That's kind of verbal direction.
Gotcha.
And so that happens a little bit.
I was just curious, yeah.
Sometimes when a person is impaired, it takes a few times to convince them to come over and they do that. So that works. Verbal direction, right? That's how that works. And then here it is by race and gender, again, all that information is broken down by race And then here it is by race and gender again. All that information is broken down by race and gender. You know, in terms of use of force, if you have questions about that. The officers, you know, when they do use force, occasionally they get a little bit of, you know, they get punched in the face or spit on or kicked or something like that. And so that's how that's broken down a little bit. Our bomb unit, we have a bomb unit, went out once a month last year. Found 10 explosive devices, the occasional pipe bomb that's homemade by a bad guy, something like that, a hand grenade. I think we found a few hand grenades last year. It was like a big hand grenade year, but they take those and they get those rendered safe. And then here's, yes, sir?
Did you put that information out that, hey, you know, a bomb was found? And yeah, while it would be dangerous, our police department was able to, you know, disarm the bomb and it was taken away and, you know, the police have done a good job.
We talked to Mr. Richmeyer about that maybe, but yeah, we, we so our fire calls processed by the police department. This is our dispatch. We did just shy of 3,200 fire calls. Most of those are EMS calls. The fire department goes with EMS and then whatever, however many fires we had. Animal control, I'm delighted every year to talk about animal control. We processed, we had about 990 animals go through animal control last year. We euthanized 11 of those, which represents almost less than 1%. I would match those numbers against just about anybody in the state. I really feel like they do a fabulous job. We rescued a lot of animals to rescues. We adopted a lot of animals for, and then, and then the owners came back and picked them up. And so I'm very happy about the performance of our animal control staff. Here's, you know, some reflections of the numbers we handled, picked up. We had the occasional goat, chicken, you know, that kind of stuff. There's the occasional non-domestic animal we have to deal with down there. Very happy. And we still have some bike cases, about 50, yes, sir?
What does housed mean?
They were there. We kept them for a couple of days.
Oh, and somebody came and got them?
Yeah, somebody came and got them. We adopted, we rescued, yeah. And then some bike cases, we had about 55 bike cases last year. Couple of them were pretty serious where people got injured and so they get cited for that, for having a dangerous dog, that kind of thing. And then there's some animal enforcement stuff that we did last year. 388 total violations, running at large, dangerous dog, that kind of thing. Most of the other ones are things like registration, vaccinations, those sorts of things that really, you know, there's back, you know, back end stuff. Okay, so that's it. We did an awful lot. I'm really proud of everybody over there working very hard. They worked a lot of overtime. They worked a lot of special events. They're just doing a great job for us, keeping us safe out there. And so I'm happy that the crime rate's going down and everybody's doing some good stuff over there for us. And I'll be glad to answer whatever questions and stress my head.
Appreciate you, chief.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad that you're staffed up, that you were, we were struggling for so long.
Right, really, really seeing some progress on retention. That's probably where we're, where we're doing the best at. We have four openings. I would anticipate that that'll be down to three here in about six weeks. There's a young girl that's getting ready to graduate from Benedictine. She's my intern. And so I'm making her graduate college first. And then when she graduates, she'll probably start right after that, a week, so that'll be at three. We're still not doing well in terms of getting people to apply and show up and test. We're still of about five or six that are showing up to test. But I think that's everywhere. Everybody's kind of struggling with the same sort of employment issues that we are.
Your time split is, I mean, you've got like, almost half of your staff has been here six years, so that was a good...
And that's where we're seeing the progress at, because before, I think it was less than that. There's a lot of two or three, and then right there, people would leave to go to a different place. And so we really, I feel like, made a lot of progress and sort of stabilized everything. And right at that three-year mark is when they really sort of start to turn the corner and blossom and we can put them out there and they can really do some good work.
What's the average age of the officers?
19, something like that, I don't know. So let's see, I would bet, I would bet half the police department is under the age of 30 still. That's the biggest bulk of the officers between, you have to be 21. So probably 22 to 30 is probably where everybody else is. And then there's probably another group right above that that are a little bit older. It kind of gets, and then there's me, I'm the oldest guy at 54, so nobody's older than that.
So what are some of the challenges that you're having?
So, experience is one, right? It's difficult to get through those first couple of years where an officer is a little bit full of themselves and they are work through how to communicate well with people, so that's a challenge. You know, but they're doing really, really well, most overall. Because I've really hammered home the last four or five years, the issue of training, right? So for example, the state statute requires officers to be trained at 40 hours. So that's what the minimum requirement is. So I've asked everybody to target 75 hours of training. And then we did the numbers. I think we averaged last year like 113 hours. And so when you see them start to sort of turn the corner and get out of that rookie phase to that and they're really training and learning and growing, that's when they really take off. It's those first year or so when they're out there by themselves that they're likely to make a misstep. As long as it's not too bad, they can learn and grow. That's probably the biggest challenge, getting the rookie officer over that hump into that three, four-year person that can really go out there and really do a lot of good things. And so other than that, you know, the regular crime stuff, they're doing a great job for us. They're doing a great job for us. So that's probably the biggest challenge, is getting those rookies trained and ready to go. And the public, asking the public to be a little patient sometimes when they're too stern or something like that. That's a challenge that we, that we spend a lot of time on.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Do you find that as a city of Lubbock, are we competitive, you know, on the wages?
Yes.
With the surrounding areas, so maybe that's not as much of an issue anymore?
Yeah, we, we made some structural changes a couple of different times over the last three or four years. And so that's really put us in a good place. And so we're not, we're not losing the officers that have been here for two and three years. That's when we really struggled. We're not having that as much anymore, buck on wood. And so that really was a really difficult problem. We invested an awful lot of time and money in them and then they would go and get these big raises. And so we're not seeing that nearly as much anymore. So we're really happy about that. I feel like we've really made some progress on that. And so to the extent that we talk about that, as we come up on budget, you know, staying ahead of that, staying on top of that would be important to us to keep the staffing issues making progress.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, could you run through, I was just curious, back on your fire calls processed by your team, what's the triggering point where you guys actually will process one of those calls for the fire department?
So most of the time, someone calls 911 because there's someone having a medical issue. And so we will simultaneously, the police department dispatcher and the county will dispatch fire and EMS to that call. So that's most of what triggers, that's what most of those are representation. Occasionally, someone will just call and say, hey, my house is on fire. And so that will dispatch fire. And then PD will go to support them for traffic control so they can, you know, make sure that fire trucks can do that. So that's the two reasons generally why fire gets sent. Okay, cool. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
I have one. You used to bring the rookies out to go to the trust talks. And do you ever see any of those coming up again?
So Reverend Landrum was in my office today.
Imagine that.
Right. We were talking about a lot of things, one of which was the next time that we're doing that. So he and I conceptually agreed to probably around the middle of April for the next one.
Great.
Because we had, he comes about once a quarter and visits me and we talk about it. We agreed, let's let it warm up and get out of the winter so nobody's coming through out of the winter. But I think probably, either at the community center, his church, or somewhere, we're talking about the first couple of weeks of April. And just to get everybody together and visit and see how things are going. So I think that's probably the next, somewhere around that timeframe.
That's really good. I really like that. Thank you.
There's no other questions. Thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Need to fight crime. We all good?
I think, I think we maybe need five.
Yeah.
They're allowing me to use your personal email box.
Last item on the agenda, recognition sign discussion.
Okay, thank you, mayor and commissioners. As you will recall, we've talked about this at a couple of study sessions over the last year. We've got out along Fourth Street, down by Ray Miller Park, and then up by Lawson Elementary School here in the north. And we have a total of nine existing folks who are, folks or groups who are honored with recognition sign. And so the discussion up to this point is finding a way to consolidate those current honorees into a more consistent-looking sign display and get them moved into Ray Miller Park. So we have talked about a draft sign policy, the recognition sign policy. We've gone over that last year. We did include that in your packet just kind of for your reference. So that keeps control with the commission in terms of selecting new honorees, provided some new criteria and all of that. And so tonight, what we're here to talk about is the actual signs, what this is going to look at, look like. As you'll recall, we had worked with Young Sign Company to come up with some options for that. At our last meeting when we talked about this back in September, we looked at some conceptual designs. There were two that the commission had asked us to move forward with on getting some cost estimates. And so that's what we're here for you to look at tonight. So the first option that had been favorable is this option identified as Concept 5, which is a, it's an individual pillar with three recognition panels per support. This would be approximately five and a half feet in height. It'd be constructed, constructed of aluminum with digitally printed vinyl lettering and graphics applied and secured to a concrete foundation. They'd be painted with this black, red, and blue color scheme. That would be applied with urethane paint. Young Sign Company has indicated that that's pretty durable, not something that we would see a lot of weathering from. It's something that's pretty common with these outdoor signs that they install. So the estimated cost for this design concept, it would include four signs that would allow for 12 honorees. So three per sign, that would account for the nine total that we have now, plus three, a space for three additional in the future. The estimated cost for all four of those to include the construction, installation, that would be approximately $18,000 for those four signs.
Okay.
The second concept that the commission had liked was identified as Design Concept C1. This consists of custom individual displays. Each individual would have their own display. It'd be a silhouette, an information panel, approximately, again, five and a half feet in height. They'd be constructed of steel custom cutout silhouettes attached to steel tubing, vertical supports, and again, secured to a concrete base foundation. The estimated cost for this concept would include 10 signs. So it would be the nine that we have now, plus a base and future sign for one more in the future is approximately $42,000 for 10 honorees. So we had talked about moving these inside Ray Miller Park. And I've got this pulled up on, how do I get rid of that? On the sharing.
Try to drag, yeah.
There we go. Okay, there we go. So Ray Miller Park out here, where the entrance is to the VA. Zoom in just a little bit. So we've got the entrance with the existing parking lot. There's a little gazebo there. Out towards the, kind of the path along Fourth Street, that's where the, the byway markers are that were installed by CVB. So this is sort of the general area that we had talked about installing them. Penny and I have talked with park staff. They kind of agree that this would be sort of the location they would be anticipating as well. So this, one thing to note about this, this particular portion of the park is actually owned by the VA. And so park staff is pretty used to working with the VA on, you know, getting things installed here. Those byway markers are actually on the VA property, even though it's part of Ray Miller Park. Steve Grant indicated that they're pretty easy to work with. Park staff does already do all the maintenance and all of that for this area, so.
So Mrs. Hurd, so you're saying like by the gazebo?
Uh, we don't have a specific, just kind of in this general area is where the thought had been since there's, there's already a parking area for folks to pull in.
Right.
You know, we talked about there being some sort of directional signage pointing people off of Fourth Street. So there's somewhere, somewhere here to park. So folks can get out, could get out and look at these signs without having to walk, you know, half a mile around the park to, just to get to them. So that was why we had been looking at this general area.
It's very exercise.
It is, and they're certainly welcome to do that, but they might not all want to.
Right.
So, so what you're saying is, these three signs, you've got three signs of this type. Is 18,000, is that 6,000 apiece? Is that what you're saying?
It's four.
For the...
Three for who we have and one more sign for three, three additional new ones.
So that 18 would be divided by four then? They're not 18,000 apiece?
No, no, the total will be 18,000. Yes.
Forty-two thousand's the total.
And then to add, if you've got, if you're adding another sign and you've got, so you've got just one person, you can put the one person and then add to that same sign. You wouldn't have to buy a whole new sign.
That's correct.
Correct. So with this, we've got, again, nine that are currently recognized. That would be three separate signs, sign pillars, since there's room for three on each one. And then this cost includes a fourth, so a fourth pillar that would allow for three additional future honorees.
I think that looks good to me. Having each individual sign made up, I just don't, I just think it's too much.
It's cool, but too much, right?
It is cool. They are cool.
I think this is classy. But it's too much. It's classy.
And the two.
The funding with the 18,000, pretty minor. So probably some combination of CVB and economic development dollars. So we wouldn't have to, it wouldn't be any, take any general fund dollars. It'd be transient guest tax or economic development set aside.
Yeah, guest tax would be.
I'm in favor of the standalone signs. I know it's a little extra in the price, but really making it personable to the individuals that we're actually honoring and recognizing, I think that's really important. And then it's really going to attract more individuals to come inside of the town, especially once we start to place these signs up. And our goal is definitely trying to bring in more people into our community.
And this red part here, though, you would have, on any of these signs, they would have information on the red part, right?
So the thought was that the red portions would have a brief bit of information. And then we plan to still use the QR codes to connect it to the website. So we can keep that updated. Let's say Melissa Etheridge came back and visited. We could continue to add on to the website with that. So the thought is that there'd be further information available, more than just what's on the sign.
So this QR code, I guess, on here would be good for all three of them. Would talk about all three of them?
It would pull up to the hometown heroes recognition page.
Oh, okay, okay. And then you can navigate.
It would be the same QR code.
Yeah, and then you could just select the link on the...
I guess, yeah.
So I guess the best thing to do is to go around the table.
You heard, yeah, you heard what I said.
Yeah, I agree with these right here from a cost perspective.
I agree with you. These would look, these would look really cute. You know, and then, you know, it starts entering my mind, okay, how far apart? Because these things are going to be five and a half feet tall. You know, or when you put them on the podium, the ground level, the concrete, they're going to be six foot tall. You know, and yeah, they'll attract a lot of attention. How far apart do you have to put them? And is there enough room on that, well, it's not there now, on that side of Ray Miller Park to put them? They would look great. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, and we had talked with Steve Grant too about maintenance in terms of, you know, mowing around them. You know, park staff, would it be needing to mow around each of these? And so that's another consideration in terms of, you know, spacing. They need room to get between them with their, you know, their mowing machines and, you know...
Well, it's a design, it's a design concept. So each new sign you have, you're going to have to have a new design designed for it, which is another...
Yeah, another fee.
So can you go back to the old one, the other one? So this, when I see this sign, and feel free to push back. I see it, it's almost like we start off with Melissa Etheridge, then we go to Wayne Simeon, then we go to Doctor, I don't, how do you say it? And so it's almost as if, to me, it just looks like we're prioritizing. Like this person is more famous than this person than this person. So it's not really honoring the individual themselves, but it's just almost as if we're just saying like, here, we're just going to stack the people up as they fall in line. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but I, I think it'll be fine. I mean, we're acknowledging everybody. It's classy. It's, it's changing it up. It's standardizing it, you know? And I think, I think something will offend somebody with this decision. But I think this will be...
Well, and currently we have standalone signs. And so I think, I'm in favor of the standalone signs.
This is going to look so much better than all those scattered different kinds of signs that are out there now. I did have a question though. What are we doing at the north end?
So the signs that are up there are just, they're repeats of ones. These are all pictures down at Ray Miller. The ones that are recognized up at Lawson, they're duplicates of ones that are already down at Ray Miller. So they're not separate ones. So all the signs that are out there currently up at Lawson and at Ray Miller would be removed. And we haven't talked through exactly, you know, what's going to happen with the signs themselves. But all of the individuals or groups that are recognized currently up here or down there would be placed on...
On these?
On, yep, on whatever option we go with.
Well, I'm, this is getting a little bit ahead of it. I would think you might contact the people that are honored or the families of.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, yes.
Those were done with private funds, so we would want to make sure we...
Yeah.
Right.
So let me ask this question.
Or display them somewhere else.
Yeah, because I'm all in favor of the standalone signs. So just say if we were to do the standalone signs and the people that were actually honoring and recognizing, if they made the decision to contribute toward these standalone signs, would we be in favor of that?
You'd have to get all of them to do it.
Some may do it and some may not.
I'd be, I'd be afraid you're, you're...
Sort of scattered.
I'd be afraid you might limit what somebody might be able to do that, that might be honored down the road. And then I don't know what's...
Because then we might be back to square one with then, like that. Because they, some would be this way and someone would be the other way, you know, on...
Man, I just think those standalone signs look good. The transient guest tax funds are there. You know, that's what we're using for tourism. It's going to attract people. And then just ask the question, I know that the First Sergeant, you know, he definitely want to get a recognition sign for his school, for the, for the group that actually won Nationals, you know, JROTC. Like what is, what is that going to look like?
I don't know. Or were they going to put that on school property?
Well, that's a decision for the commission if that wants to be...
The Raiders, Raiders.
Uh, yeah, the JROTC Raiders, if that's, if you would want to utilize, you know, the sign recognition policy to include them in this or, you know, come up with some other alternative to have them, you know, put a recognition sign on the school property. So whoever the commission decides based on the policy that gets adopted, you know, whether it's JROTC or another individual or another group, you know, down the line. Then with the, with this option, whoever it is, you know, their panel would have the same appearance. It'd be real consistent. And then, you know, with the standalones, it would be some sort of individual design that Young Sign Company would need to come up with for each new honoree.
So we get input from the community. Got to try everything.
I guess though, what kind of input?
Yeah.
It's not scientific though.
Well, we only got two, I think, you know what I mean? Because like I said, it's still going to be inside of the park. It's going to, it's for the communities, honoring those that have contributed to the community. for the communities, honoring those that have contributed to the community, and so.
I just, I just pictured one big giant sign with, with these other signs either put on it or individual signs put on it. That's what I pictured, I didn't picture these, these. I don't know.
Yeah, you had something in mind, kind of like, down the road, the other side of Lansing, they've got that big billboard with all the organization signs.
But something nicer going to Lansing.
But something nicer.
As you come in the northbound.
Yeah. I didn't expect, I didn't really expect all of this individual standalone stuff. I expected it to be consolidated, because I'm sick of seeing them spread out all over the town. And so, well, somehow consolidated, but I didn't expect them to have individual signs, still individual signs, or, you know, even a line of signs. I don't know.
Yeah, and so, the option, this option consolidates them.
A little bit more, yeah.
A little bit more than having the individual.
And you recall when we brought this to the commission last time, I think we had three or four sign concepts. One was a larger sign, similar to this, but larger, with a lot more side flags, if you will, that would do one sign that incorporated everyone. It seemed like at the time, in comparison, these were the two concepts that the commission said, let's go back and get the right quotes on it.
Yeah.
So, it's the price, that's the problem, that's what I'm hearing.
No, I don't think so. I mean, yeah. Every time we add, every time we add a, a new sign, we're going to have to totally redesign it. I mean, she obviously designed, she, he, probably Eric designed these, but anyway, they, each one is going to have to be designed differently as they come in. And, I don't know.
I think the people worth the investment.
Don't do that to me. Don't you do that to me.
And I see what you're saying.
I do think they're worth the investment, but I, you know, but I think they're worth a lot more than what we've got out there now.
Correct, correct.
That's for sure. That's for sure.
So, I, I want to hear from the public, you know, we're a commission, we have to make a decision as a whole, so.
Well, we don't, that's one of the nice things about being at a study session.
Yeah.
We don't have to make the decision tonight.
Just talk about it, yeah.
That's cool.
But, but.
So, if you just want us to do nothing, then we'll do nothing.
Because it's, yeah.
I don't want us to do nothing.
It's been, it's been taking a while to get to this point.
Yeah.
I think the first study session was in June.
Yeah, of last year, yeah. And I know people were like, what's going on? What's going on?
All right, can we just bring it up, and we'll just make a final decision, the next study session, we'll go from there. All right, whatever it is.
No, we don't make final decisions at the study session.
Well, we have a consensus. We have a consensus.
It won't be the next one, the next one, we have reserved for the two presentations on Fire Station Three, but it'd be probably the first one in April, then.
Yeah. So, you all just go home, take this with you, just visualize yourself on these signs?
Do you think that's.
Have a connection everywhere.
There is no time limit.
Who's, who's developing the narrative?
What? Is that, is that a consensus that we have right now, is to wait until the next one? Or what do we want to do?
I say table it.
Do we have, those are the two things sort of before you now. Do we have a consensus to move forward with this? Do we have a consensus to hold it until a study session in April? We need a consensus either way.
I consent to move forward with that right there.
I say wait.
I think, I say wait.
Thank you.
Edward, Mr. Hingaugh.
I'm good for this, but it's not a consensus if.
Well, we got one more.
One more, of course. I mean, I, I like these, but, I mean, we've waited this long since June of last year, a few more weeks, I guess, wouldn't hurt.
So, is there something that you're wanting staff to do?
They just want staff, they're waiting for some feedback.
Do we need to put something out? Or, okay, so you're just waiting for people to hear from people yourselves?
Yeah, the mayor would, you know, it's some.
Do we want to invite people to?
I'll take pictures of these and put them on my.
Yep, I plan on doing the same thing.
I mean, we can, we can do the same thing.
Yeah, if you can do the same.
Put them on the, put it on the city's website and ask for people to make comments.
City do it, yeah.
You know, and your comments are going to help determine what we do.
I would just ask wherever we posted, especially if it's on a city website, excuse me, that we list the individual name, cost, price, because.
And where the funding is coming from and what's the purpose of the funding.
Yeah, yeah, there is double, over the double the price, so.
Okay. Can do. All right, we'll, we'll bring it back.
Yep, appreciate you. All right, go around, that concludes our study session. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Going around the table, starting with Paul?
Sure, just a couple of quick things. Thank John in Leavenworth Times for putting the article about the woman upgrade in the newspaper with a picture. Looked really nice, I'm really excited about that for our public. We're also getting ready to plan, planning in the date for the opening of the splash park with all the new features. And so, probably at the end of April, that will do that. So, excited about that. Restrooms are open and being used out at the parks. Bids for Polycarts came in today. We actually ended up getting four bids, we expected two, so four, so that's good. What we're doing now is making sure they're apples to apples, that we're getting the same quality, but also the same delivery methods, the same, same services. So, those are scheduled to come before you this month in March for the bid for Polycarts. We are, it's pothole season. The roads never look worse than they do right after the end of winter. They've had a rough, a rough year, so.
It's this winter, okay.
So, our hot boxes are out. Please have people report potholes, we'll, we'll work on those. We did move pavement management program up, March 21st, actually, is the bid opening for the first half of pavement management, so we'll be doing that much earlier this year. And then finally, just a little personal anecdote, I got to watch the KU game at Wilco Brewing on Saturday, and there were families in there, and there were people playing cards, and people would take out food, and it was pretty busy, and downtown Leavenworth was very active Saturday afternoon, so that was really cool to see. I had a friend in town, so we went down there to watch the KU game, so it was pretty neat. And Sean was working on a Saturday afternoon drilling fence post holes in the back to get the outdoor area ready for St. Patrick's Day, so.
That's, that was his goal, yeah.
Great, great group down there at Wilco. So, that's all I have.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, I am, I didn't have anything. I have, I'll tell you one thing I did, which I talked to Paul Kramer-Bell and sort of Sarah a little bit, is since our last meeting on trash bags, or, you know, that we're not going to purchase them anymore, and I know a lot of people are coming down and buying them, but just still have a lot of questions, which is okay, it's confusing with the Polycarts and the trash bags, but I think they do have an information sheet, I think at the city clerk's office, that answers a bunch of questions. Am I right on that? Yeah, that. And when, when did you say we were going to?
This month.
This month, yeah, so. And that's all I have. Have a great rest of the week.
St. Patrick's Day is coming up.
Yay.
So, go get your green and be ready, you know? And if you're part of a contingent that would march in the parade, go out there and march in the parade and have fun, enjoy it. Come on downtown and see what, see how many people will be cheering you on as you're marching, marching by.
March 17th at, starts at noon, parade starts at noon.
Rain, sleet, or snow? Rain, sleet, or snow?
Yeah, any, it don't matter, don't matter.
And we got it.
It don't matter.
We've always had it already, yeah.
Just wanted to, I guess, kind of mention to the commission, I think everybody's seen it, just from an economic standpoint right now across the country, consumer borrowing is up a ton right now, and there's a lot of companies right now that are really asking for extended payment terms. And with everything up in the air, Russia, China, everything, and other infrastructure issues that we're going to have across the country right now. Just a word of caution as we get into the budgeting season, I think, you know, this is just my opinion, I think we're on maybe the, the front end of some tougher times ahead potentially with raw materials and cost of goods going up even further, so.